Father Papa Giorgio will lead us in the opening prayer. And then Firefather Jared Seed is going to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, we're going to ask for a moment of silence for the departed former Commissioner, Woody Thompson, who has gone to our father's home. So that, those who are willing and able, please stand.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. O heavenly King, comforted the spirit of truth, present everywhere and filling all things, the treasure of blessings and the giver of life, come and dwell in us and cleanse us from every stain and save our souls, good one. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mortal have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mortal have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mortal have mercy on us. We offer thanksgiving to you, O Lord, for all your gifts and blessings. We humbly come to you and ask that you may send upon us your heavenly Spirit to enlighten our hearts and minds. Give us of your wisdom and knowledge. Help us to know your will for your people whom we serve. Guide us in all, in all our decisions to do what is best for them. Help us to shine with your love and compassion. Grant us your peace and your love. For glorified is your name, of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and always, and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with the, like, with the board's consensus, I'd like to add a non-agenda item, number two, where we have a recognition of a donation. So I'd like to make that number two, and the number two that's in the program, which is the Silver Eagle, we'd like to slide that to number three. Is that's okay with the board? Okay. So that, we have a number of awards tonight, proclamations, so I'll start with Commissioner Cupid.
For those here with Marietta Yells and AmeriCorps Vista, can you join me up front, please?
Tonight I have the opportunity to recognize volunteer efforts that take place all across our nation, and that are hallmark here in Cobb County through the service of many volunteers with AmeriCorps, and particularly with the Marietta Yells program. So with that, I have a proclamation that I'd like to share in recognition of all of your hard work and your service to our community here, and also recognition of AmeriCorps service across the United States. We're as service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And we're as the nation's counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And we're as AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And we're as national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And we're as AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And we're as national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. We're as national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on our taxpayer dollars. And we're as national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And we're as national service directly impacts our local community through Vista projects within Cobb County, like the youth empowerment through learning, leading, and serving, Yells program, where AmeriCorps Vista members build capacity to educate and empower the youth and families of Franklin Gateway in Cobb County. And we're as the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 3, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, and to thank current AmeriCorps Vista's Andrea Bracy, Versandra Kennebrew, and Christopher Sally, and former AmeriCorps Vista Sandy Mitchell, who serve and find ways to give back to their community at Yells Incorporated. This the 27th day of March, 2018. Thank you. Did anyone want to share any words about Yells or AmeriCorps Vista?
Definitely Commissioner Cupid and the rest of the commissioners and esteemed guests here, on behalf of the AmeriCorps Vista's that represent the Yells Youth Empowerment through Learning, Leading, and Serving, it is our honor to receive this special recognition on this day, and it is our honor to give thousands of our hours, our blood, sweat, and tears, if you will, to our youth of Franklin Gateway. We know that the youth, they are our future, and if we don't give back to them, then who do we expect is going to do the work? So we are here, and we do it every day with honor, and we do it with pride. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Oh, I must also please add, she did not stand with us, but our wonderful partner, Laura Keefe, if you don't mind standing, she is the visionary of Yells. Yes. We definitely honor her as well, and we thank her for her commitment not only to the youth, but for her commitment to our professional development, because we are learning as we serve. So thank you so much, Laura, for all you do for Yells.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura, and thank you all of you who are serving the youth out there in the community. I know I've seen you here before, speaking before us on behalf of them, and you guys are doing a great work. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
And now we have Commissioner Burrow with a special program here, one of our favorite topics, Marines.
Okay, I'm the dog lover of the group. Good evening, everyone. If I could ask Jay Cunningham and Petey to come up front. Most of you probably remember last year, I initiated a program for free adoptions for veterans at our Cobb County Animal Shelter. And Jay Cunningham here with Superior Plumbing was generous enough to donate $5,000, which would cover 50 veterans. Well, a few months ago, we had number 29, a World War II veteran, Mr. Paul Pitts, from Austell Community, that adopted his forever friend from the shelter, and it got national coverage on, on the news. And after that, the adoptions soared. So we're almost up to the first 50. And Jay has agreed to donate another 5,000 to give us 50 more adoptions. So Petey, Petey is a rescue, Petey here. I have two rescues from the Cobb County Animal Shelter at my house, and so we have a common ground here in our love for animals, but also our military and our veterans. So, thank you, Jay. Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, and I want to make sure that we, we don't lose in the fact of the animals and the dogs, that the veterans are the real reason that we do this. And my father's a veteran, and there's so many veterans, and people that have served in the past, and the people that currently serve. We need to recognize and realize that the reason that we, that we get to do everything we do on a daily basis is a result of what they've done and what they do on a daily basis. So just want to make sure they know that, and we're, we're pleased and privileged and honored to be able to do this. So thank you to you and all the friendly commissioners and, and everybody. Thank you.
And I also have some forms here, if we have any veterans in the, in the audience. Thank you for your service. God bless you, and pick up a form and take home your new best friend. He's checking us out. He doesn't, he doesn't want me to get too close. Good boy. Thank you, Jay. You're going to take this, though?
And then for our last part of this program, I'll turn this over to the county manager, and Joe Tommy, I believe, right? We are. This is the presentation of the 2017 Silver Eagle Award.
If we could also have the other members of the Silver Eagle Committee, Latona Thomas and Steve McCullers, to please come forward. Okay, good evening. Each year, the Silver Eagle Award is presented to a member of the Cobb County Management Team that's demonstrated outstanding teamwork and leadership among members of the management team. The recipient is selected through election by his or her peers, so this evening it's our distinct pleasure to recognize the 2017 Silver Eagle Award recipient. And before we announce the recipient, I want to read just a few comments that were submitted by this manager's fellow managers. First comment was, "This is an outstanding leader and team player who always displays a calm demeanor even in stressful situations." This manager's a strong, steady leader who is always polite and respectful to others, and always exhibits a positive attitude and a willingness to help others. So at this time, we would like to recognize our 2017 Silver Eagle recipient, Mr. Bill Vogtman, Cobb County Finance Director.
Okay. I was told they were going to dinner, so. Hey, buddy. Thank you. Thank you. First, I would just like to thank the department heads. This is my first year as a department manager, and the support that they have given has been, I mean, I just couldn't get anything done without them. They're fantastic, and my team is the same thing. I mean, we couldn't do anything in finance without the whole team, so I really appreciate all of your support, and I've learned a lot from a lot of you over the last couple of years, but mostly in the last year. Thank you all for reaching out and helping me any way you can, so thank you.
All right, everybody. Three, two, one.
I would be remiss if I didn't also add that, as you know, we've got a new budget pro, recycle process here, and Bill and his team have been absolutely superb. I've never met anyone quite as flexible and on the, on the, on the ball as Bill is. He's done a terrific job here, and I know the board joins me in joining him and his family, congratulating them on this really well-earned and deserved reward. We couldn't do this without Bill. Okay, so on to tab three, and we have a second public hearing tonight on chapter 654 and 134 of the Cobb County Code, right?
Yes, sir. Dan Johnson, Community Development, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second public hearing. There is one section of code that we're not going to be voting on tonight. I'll highlight that first to get that out of the way, and then we'll cover the other areas of the code. The areas of the code that will not be voted on all deal with server permits. That covers 6-90, 6-147G3, 6-180, 6-206, 6-207, and 6-208. All of those will come back in a altered version as Public Safety and Community Development and the County Attorney's Office rework those and, and come back with another alteration. And that'll be on April 24th, when those will be heard. Staying in chapter six, on chapter six dash 147 deals with fees, suspensions, revocations, and transfers of licenses. In this particular one, we have really done a overhaul on the way that we do fees. Before, you had a one-time fee of a $750 fee, everything else then went to the License Review Board for consideration. This really sets out a set of scheduled suspensions that a licensee would be subject to if one of their employees were to serve in a manner that's not consistent with the law. And it then allows for individuals to pay a amount per day based upon the days of suspension that they have, which would be $750 a day, per day of suspension. There are two levels of appeals that are contained within this, which are very important. You have the appeal of fact, which would then go through the License Review Board, and if you're a business that might be negatively impacted by this from a financial perspective, you have an appeal of the fee amount that you'll be able to take to the full Board of Commissioners. So that covers the new amendment on, or the new version of 6-147, fees, revocations, and transfers of licenses. Under chapter six, we also have 6-179, which are requirements for alcoholic beverage serving at amusement parks. Before, if you were, you, you, if you purchased alcohol at an amusement park, you would need to stay in a confined area during the, for the consumption of the beverage, and this would remove the areas where you had to be contained, and you would still have to go through all of your checks as far as ensuring that you're 21, having a wristband, so that park security will know that you are properly vetted to be able to obtain alcohol, but it would not restrict you to sort, to a specific area as it relates to the consumption of that beverage. Getting into the fire code, fire prevention and protection. This 654-114 adds some, some language that helps provide the intent behind the burning prohibitions that are contained in the code. So there's some, some basis of policy as to why those prohibitions are there and what the rationale is. Lastly, in the zoning ordinance, we have section 134-198.1. We have three options for the open space community code. This was a request that came forward to, the, the overall intention was to, we were asked to find ways of which we could encourage recreational uses within clustered subdivisions, our OSC subdivisions. We came up with three different options for the board to consider. Option one deals with the net buildable area, where right now, under a regular R20 district or R30 district residential zoning category, you'd be able to count your space where your amenity package is in towards your density calculations. However, in an open space community, you are not able to do so. So what, what option one does is it, is it allows for the impervious community areas like pools, clubhouses, tennis courts, and other things to be counted towards your overall density calculations in OSC as you currently have in a regular zoning category. Option two looks at reducing the minimum lot size of the OSC categories to provide additional space for the amenity packages, basically is what option two does. So it reduces the square footage amount. That will then provide additional space that the developer would be able to utilize to add that recreational package. Option three is similar to option one, but it's more restrained. So it, it's the same instance of using the net buildup area as a way to encourage bringing in these recreational uses, but it restricts it to gazebos, playgrounds, and active field areas, or areas with very little impervious surface, is what that really comes down to. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask if you would please open the, the public hearing on, on these codes, and certainly as always, I'll be happy to answer any of the board's questions you may have in regard to these amendments.
Okay, thank you, Dana. And just to go over the ground rules here, there's no limit to the number of speakers. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. And so, having said that, I now declare this public meeting, the public hearing open. And is there anyone here that wishes to address this, this, these topics? Is there anyone here that wishes to address these topics? Seeing none, I'll declare this public hearing to a close. And we're going to vote on it. I think we should vote on each, on each section separately. That's probably a better way to do it.
Any way you want to do it, Chairman, we're happy to accommodate.
Do you have questions after the motion is made?
Yeah, let me, let's make the motion, and then we'll have the discussion after the motion is made, all right? So I'll let you lead the, lead the discussion. It says right here, Commissioner Burrow, assigned.
First, we're not doing the chapter six.
There are two areas of chapter six that are being considered tonight, ma'am.
Okay, we're doing 6-147?
Yes, ma'am, that's one of them.
Okay, fee, suspension, revocation, or transfer. Okay. Well, don't they all go together with the rest G3 and, and the rest of them that we're not voting on?
Most of those deal with server permits specifically, Commissioner, where this was a, this was a different one that dealt with the fees and suspensions. This is actually up to be considered in February, but it was held to provide some additional time for us to, to work on the language for this one, ma'am.
So I will make a motion to approve section 6-147, fee, suspension, revocation, or transfer.
Second. Any discussion? No, I'll call a question. And it passes five to zero.
I'm really, okay. So now 6-207?
6-179, ma'am.
179. See, I'm, I'm not sure.
This one deals with the amusement.
Okay, so no more in that section, because you're, we're waiting till April.
Right.
Okay, 6-79?
179.
Page 19.
Requirements for sale of alcohol beverages at amusement parks.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, this is just for the sale. This isn't for an unrestricted areas.
What this, what this code would do, right now they're authorized to, to sell, but the consumption must occur in a restricted area. This would remove the restrictions to the consumption areas. But they still have.
Anywhere in the park?
They would be able to consume it anywhere in the car, not purchase it anywhere in the park, but they would require, be required to have the wristbands and other devices that the park staff utilizes in order to identify a person who's been vetted to be able to consume and purchase alcohol.
Okay, so at Six Flags, you could purchase it in the park and walk around with it in the park, where kids are, rides are.
As long as you have the band.
Okay, so I can still make the motion, but I don't have to.
Correct.
Vote for it, okay. Okay, motion to approve section 6-179, requirements for sale of alcohol beverages at an amusement park.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, tab four is public comment. And how many do we have speakers we have tonight?
You have 12 speakers.
Okay.
If you'd like to hear them all at once.
Uh, should we all hear them all? Probably, probably the best way to do that.
All right, well.
Yeah, okay, does that agree with everybody?
Because if they're here for an agenda item, this after the second, they will just put the second.
Yeah, so.
Do we all agree?
Do we agree? So we'll do all 12.
Okay.
But I just remind everybody, though, that you have five minutes, but we're going to enforce the five-minute rule, all right? So hope you've rehearsed your, your, your comments, because I don't want to embarrass you by cutting you off in the middle. So that, again, I'll, I'll call you out by name, and then you have five minutes. Please let us know who you are and where you live, so we can put you on the record. Thank you very much. So Commissioner, Mr. Stance?
The first speaker is Stephen George, if you'd come forward.
Hi, my name is Stephen George, and I live in an incorporated Cobb County. As most of you know, I'm the new.
You have a second and discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
And Chapter one thirty-four for, uh, dash one ninety-eight point one, open space community overlay OSC district. I would make a motion to approve option three.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve option three.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, uh, tab four is public comment. And how many do you speak, do we have tonight?
You have twelve speakers.
Okay.
If you'd like to hear them all at once.
Uh, should we all hear them all? Probably, probably the best way to do that.
All right, well.
Yeah, okay, does that agree with everybody?
Because if they're here for an agenda on this after the second, they will just put the second.
Yeah, so. Do we all agree? Do we agree? So we'll do all twelve.
Okay.
Now, I just remind everybody though, that you have five minutes, but we're going to enforce the five-minute rule, all right? So, hope you've rehearsed your, your, your comments, because I don't want to embarrass you by cutting you off in the middle. So that, again, um, we'll, we'll call you out by name and then you have five minutes. Please let us know who you are and where you live so we can, uh, put you on the record. Thank you very much. So Commissioner, uh, Stance?
The first speaker is Stephen George, if you come forward.
Hi, my name is Stephen George and I live in an incorporated Cobb County. As most of you know, I'm the new senior research fellow for the Safe American Foundation. And we are going to be doing a, first of all, Brain Camp was a phenomenal success. We had over three hundred and seventy-five people in attendance and we couldn't have done it without the, uh, support, uh, and the help of the Cobb County Government, particularly public safety. For those who aren't aware of, uh, Safe America, we are striving to be the voice redefining safety. We have some core issues. We have community safety. We're working at, working on active shooters, human trafficking, veterans assistance, infrastructure, transportation safety, training for a safe America, whether drivers, um, air rail or other travel safety. Disaster readiness, emergency response and safety preparedness for natural disasters and terrorist threats. We've also working on technology safety, cybersecurity, digital identity theft and internet protectors and bully, predators and bullies. Also global safety. We also have an, uh, World Safe Internet Forum for CEOs and C-level executives. Our spring symposium will be April the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh at the Atlanta Federal Reserve Bank. It's going to be a tremendous opportunity for people to meet and network with people from across the nation. We do have, um, a filler out to, um, somebody from the, uh, U.S. Department of Transportation, but we've got some of our speakers include Elon Stevie, uh, who is, um, a person who has trained Navy SEALs. We have Kathleen Kirin, who has a background in ATF. Of course, we have, uh, Mike, uh, Register, Chief Register. And then some of the other things we're working on include human, uh, sex trafficking victims. Uh, one of the things that I was quite shocked at is that, um, uh, most, uh, maybe not most, but we have human, uh, tra- trafficking victims as young as the elementary school-aged kids. I just find that I don't know whether that infuriates me or just makes me sad. But anyway, this was a very inarticulate way of sharing some of the things that we're doing and we would hope to have everyone, uh, who could attend the training. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George, and I really appreciate your civic involvement.
The next speaker is Amy Barnes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here to address the fact that I believe our law library is still in violation of Brown versus Board of Education. Two computers have been placed within public access areas, but the problem is, is computers are not the books, the very meat and heart of our law library. And what happens is when you try and access the book-based material from these computers, it's not accessible. Um, under Brown versus Board of Education in nineteen fifty-four, it was determined that a protected class that had separate but equal access, well, that wasn't constitutional. And the whole idea of Brown versus Board of Education was to provide the public its own self-directed free access to the education system. Whereas if you look at the law library, um, it is locked and hidden, you have to ask for an armed deputy to escort you down to the basement. Now, this is not equal access if basically we are looking at being, um, subject to force, armed escort in order to, where do I get the slide?
Put that up on, Brad, put that up on the screen, please.
Projector? This is the situation we have today with our law library. We have the able-bodied freely accessing our law library and we have a requirement essentially for another person to step in with a gun at their side in order for the disabled to have fair access to the law library. Uh, this is not the way our own commissioners' offices are structured. Anybody who's disabled, all they have to do is go into the elevator and bam, they're there on their own accord. Um, I am still unaware as to who is responsible for the law library. Nobody has told me who is the administrator. Um, nobody has given me anything as far as an update goes as to when we're going to move these books. Um, I have witnessed a young man, uh, on crutches being denied access to the law library, whereas I, on two feet, uh, albeit still physically disabled in part, uh, by cerebral palsy, am allowed free access to the deputy and nobody tells me anything anymore. Um, but I think that this is, this is in violation of Brown versus Board of Education. Uh, the disabled are, are still having to fight for equal rights in all of society and I really don't want to see this come to litigation against the county. How hard is it to move a set of books to an accessible location? Um, I, I've already run a, a, a series of federal fights. I'm willing to work with the county. I just want to see a plan of action. I want to see someone who is responsible. I want to see a plan of action to bring the textbooks up and I want to see it done. And this is, um, a fight that I have seen two years in the making. Um, I think that we as a county can do this. This is in a, um, a courthouse that has been known for twenty-three years. Staff members have confirmed to me that for twenty-three years, they have known that the disabled would not have equal access to that law library. So at this point in time, I think we need to consider this problem that we have and free the disabled from a lack of equal access. Thank you very much and power to the people.
The next speaker is Robin Meyer.
Good evening. My name is Robin Meyer and I'm the chairman of the Board of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. And, um, I think this sign says it all. Uh, we would like you to vote yes for the Mabelton Discovery Park later on your agenda tonight. As I understand that there are two issues, um, that have, that have been the subject of much discussion. First has to do with parking. This master plan is not the last step for this park, but it really is the first step. And with your approval, it's going to move on to engineering where, uh, if it turns out there's a better solution for parking than is currently drawn on the, on the draft master plan, that would be great. But if what's drawn on that plan is actually the best option, the, that, that is available now, then that's, that is the option that we would urge you to take. Um, we, we wish that none of the land were needed for parking, but to use an acre or so of the hundred and three available seems to us like a good compromise. Uh, the park is landlocked virtually by industrial uses. Um, there is some county property about a half mile away, but, uh, honestly, asking people of all abilities to walk half a mile to get to the park before they even navigate the park seems like an unreasonable situation. There, we had hoped for some land adjacent to the park, but that owner, uh, has a price that seems far too high to even consider negotiating and that negotiation would slow things down way too much. We would like the park opened to the public just as soon as possible. I, like many of my neighbors, have been working on this for over ten years. Next up is the name. While I and other MIC leaders who've worked on this, um, to get this, this park on the SPOS list in the first place, I, I for a long time thought that, that the Chattahoochee Riverline Battlefield Park was a fine name. I was dismayed to see the Johnson Riverline be the name that was on the SPOS list because this property contains Union fortifications too. So that name has never been a good name for the whole hundred and three acres. But since then, I've listened to and learned from my neighbors and my friends. And I've dug deep into the myth and the reality that civil war, that the civil war projects on us today. I can no longer support that name of the, of the Chattahoochee Riverline Battlefield Park. It brings too much hurt, too much conflict and too much division to the forefront. It emphasizes our differences when this park, this opportunity for recreation, should be bringing us together in unity and on common ground. Mabelton Discovery Park as a name speaks to the future. It welcomes all to discover recreation, nature and history. We don't need to name this park for a battlefield in order for civil war historians and enthusiasts to find it. They're well-informed and, um, they have in fact, over the years, already found it despite the fact that there are virtually no signs or indication that it's there. We do need a name that, that will pack, that will, that will pique the interest and spark the commitment of our community so that our community can embrace this park. We're there every day. We don't visit occasionally. We are there every day and we're the future of that park. We're the people who are going to be the friends of that park. We're the people who are going to be watching over that park and making it our own. So please, 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 name this park something. Mabelton Discovery Park is our choice. Name this park something that will make it the part of our community that we want it to be. Thank you.
My name is Ken Griffiths. I used to live in this county and sometimes I wish I still did. Um, I'm a member of the Georgia Civil War Commission, which is a statewide, uh, activity. The Board of the Commission passed a resolution. They'd like me to read that to, to you folks this evening. Board Resolution of the Georgia Civil War Commission Supporting the Historical Name Johnson Riverline Park. Upon motion duly seconded, the following resolution was adopted. My hand shakes, I've got Parkinson's, it's not contagious, but, uh... The Georgia Civil War Commission was created by a nineteen ninety-three Georgia General Assembly with its mandate as spelled out in Senate Resolution twenty-one to coordinate planning, preservation and promotion of structures, building sites and battlefields associated with a significant period of our common heritage. And whereas one of the reasons the Georgia Civil War Commission was created was to protect and preserve structures of the civil war era, which include Confederate monuments and more, memorials that dot our state's landscape and therefore let it be resolved, the Georgia Civil War Commission supports maintaining the current historical name Johnson Riverline Further, we oppose informally, and this is not part of the resolution, we oppose renaming the area Mabelton Discovery Park as it is in directive, the park's not in Mabelton, as I understand it. It ignores the historical significance and strategic and tactical military action which occurred at and around the site and misses signage and marketing opportunities to capture and direct visitors interested in visiting civil war sites. Mabelton Discovery Park is a misnomer that conjures up a picture of substantial variance with the plan for the park master plan. Keeping the name of the areas of the Johnson Riverline by which it is well-known is correctly descriptive, historically appropriate and opposes the, and we oppose the use of Mabelton Speaking for myself, not the commission, I understand that Andy Young, with whom I don't always agree, but often do, made the following observation in, uh, to the city of Atlanta. When you've got, uh, Atlanta as the birthplace of the civil rights movement and while it was not the birthplace, it enjoyed or was subject to, uh, a, a substantial contributory, uh, activity during the American Civil War, that when you've got these two competing, uh, situations, that destruction of one does not necessarily enhance the other. In fact, in this case, it's destructive of the other. So I think that what we need is, uh, to come together, as Robin said, but, uh, we need to, we can't, we can't, uh, can't change history, but we can try to explain it. Hope you will vote against the, uh, renaming of the Riverline. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Larry Gore, please.
Thank you for hearing me. Please accept my oral comments in association with my annotated notes, uh, continuation of my grievance file with you on ten-ten, two thousand seventeen. Covenant Place is a conservation subdivision, was established in two thousand and four by Z one oh four. In two thousand and nine, I mean, I'm sorry, in two thousand and five, developers were offered a contract to dredge the lake one foot deeper and repair the dam according to Georgia Safe Dam requirements. And also, uh, add three feet of dirt to the top of the dam for a total compensation of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Cobb County also required a fifty-foot natural undisturbed greenbelt around the lake in violent in perpetuity for erosion control, aquatic habitat and lake aesthetics. The work was never done. A GIS view of the lakeshore shows the denigration of the natural habitat. Cost to restore the greenbelt and provide the pristine lake and improved dam will easily double and probably triple the two thousand and five price. The current dam is nine hundred and forty-two feet elevation and should be nine hundred and forty-five feet elevation per Cobb County approved development plan. The floodplain is nine forty-two feet and the dam was overtopped in two thousand and nine, causing extensive damage to the dam. I've got a county letter that says that, uh, floodplain's at nine hundred and forty-three feet, uh, one foot above the dam. The dam was inspected by Cobb County nine-one-two-seventeen and revealed many faults, some listed as troubling. When the U.S. Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers mandates, we will be required to build a Category One dam more than twice as high as our Category Two dam and will cost multi-millions of dollars. A Category One dam is twenty-five feet high and holds back more than one hundred acre-feet of water. Our Category Two dam is approximately twelve feet high, but holds back more than one hundred acre-feet of water. Doug Perotti's board, while under the direction of the Declarant, accepted deed and title to all the defective common property without reservation. Bob McPeak has confirmed to the county, we, the HOA, own the common property. There are seventy-two homeowners there. In addition, we have almost five acres of primary nature area that should have fifteen feet minimum width recreational trails throughout ADA accessible with appropriate signage and landscaping along the rainwater property line. These are county records. We should have a noise and visual berm along all lots fronting Moon Road, landscaped and irrigated. Estimated costs of these projects could be higher than a hundred thousand dollars. The erosion standard for ditch and erosion trails was established at the entry of Unit One and Unit Two embedded creek rock. Whatever Cobb County and the developers' reasoning is, I do not know, but they have passed that liability of these properties to us. However, your board, our board, I pass this out to our community Saturday, uh, door-to-door. However... However, our board may not endet us more than $10,000 per year of our money or spend more than $10,000 a year of our money without our approval. So I'm asking for a vote on that. And I ended that by saying, "What will we do to defend ourselves and bring justice to our community?" The developer here, their business is dirt moving. I couldn't figure why they did not want that $400,000 money to put in their pocket. As it turns out, the repair that the county approved for that dam is illegal. The Corps of Engineers will not approve it. The Georgia Safe Dams will not approve it. It is a repair that, once you break into the dam and try to do these remediations that they specified, the Corps of Engineers and the Georgia Safe Dams will require a
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Category 1 dam to be built.
Okay. Yes, sir. You talk to your commissioner about this?
Yes.
Mr. Gore.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you sent us correspondence, and I know that we have had staff aim to address your issue, but in listening to you tonight, I understand
We're not there yet, ma'am.
This is a continuing issue. That's why I just inquired with, our county manager has this issue not yet been resolved.
No, ma'am.
I don't know if this is appropriate time for response, but there seems to be thought that this is more of a civil issue than a county issue at this point.
Well, we were hoping to avoid that because we don't want to add additional cost to the remediation of this project, but we may have to. We're trying to avoid that.
Okay.
I'm sort of like the lady Brown versus, we kind of wish that everybody could see this for what it truly is and save everybody money, time, and energy.
Yeah.
I'm too old for this anymore. I'm 74 years old.
Well, you look good for 74, Mr. Gore.
I want to go home and enjoy my retirement.
The only thing I can think of at this point, I know staff has been conferring with you, is for all of us to sit down together and try to see, at least for me to get a
I'd be happy to.
Better understanding, because I just, I just didn't expect to see you back here regarding this matter, so.
Yes, ma'am.
At the very least, you know, let's try to coordinate a time for us to get together and, and, and talk through what are the lingering issues?
I'm available.
Okay.
Just, will you contact me or should I call you or what?
Yes, well, either my office or staff has been working with you, will get with you on a day and time that works.
I'm retired and retarded, so all that works. But we're trying to do what's best for this community. We can see that if, if the developer had went and repaired this dam the way you guys agreed for it to, he'd lost his permit.
Okay.
You understand?
All right. We'll, we'll make sure we get back together here
Yes, sir, thank you.
Start talking about this. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, sir.
The next speaker is Michael Ray.
My name is Michael Ray. I live in Cobb County, Powder Springs. I also live at Covenant Place where Mr. Gore lives. I'll probably have the shortest comments tonight of anyone, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the commission here today. Ever since I bought my lot there at Covenant Place and had my home built approximately two and a half years ago, there's been so many numerous violations of the code that I would probably be up here 30, 40 minutes, only being a resident there two and a half years. But I would just like to note, note three that are ongoing there continuously. Trees are cut down in the buffer zone area by one particular individual on the property who lives there in the buffer zone to build illegal boat docks on the lake, which violates the code. I understand now these boat docks have been taken down, but these trees were cut down in the buffer zone area, and my home is right next to a buffer zone area for water runoff and soil erosion protection. Also, many people that live along the lake, they have private property, their own private property such as boats, tables, chairs. They're left in the open space in the buffer zone where they shouldn't be around the lake. And thirdly, we would love for the commission to enforce the conservation code. We need, like Mr. Gore said, a Category 1 dam. We have a Category 2 dam that's not me specifications per the developer when the various homeowners and various builders came in to build that property. And so there's so many ongoing problems there. What I say to you tonight is very miniscule. And I do appreciate your time. Mine's the shortest speech. And Mr. Boyce, you and I have one thing in common. You're a great Marine, and I was in the Navy in Vietnam, Macon Delta, Riverine Patrol in '69 and '70. And like my cohort over here, I'm retired also and probably retarded on the verge of '72 instead of '74. So I consider it a great honor to speak to you. I've seen all your pictures in the Mirror Daily Journal, which I take daily. God bless you and God bless you for what you do for Cobb County.
Sir, and thank you for your service.
Sheila Edwards.
Sheila Edwards, Mableton, Georgia. Chairman Boyce, Commissioners Cupid, Ott, Burrell, and Weatherford. I've been a resident of Cobb County since 1992. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and community advocate in Mableton. I am also a resident of Legacy at the Riverline subdivision. Our subdivision comprised of families, seniors, young professionals, and more are the closest property to the proposed park. On behalf of myself and my community, on behalf of myself and my community, I want you to know that we fully support the Mableton Improvement Coalition's recommendations regarding the park and urge you to approve the master plan and to begin the work this year. We also want to ensure that the park is given a proper name that reflects inclusion in the diverse residents and families that call this area home. Mableton Discovery Park does just that. Whether you're young or old, a trailblazer or a changemaker, every individual can find themselves within the name discovery. Good governance is about bringing people together, and parks are about bringing people together. We urge you to be the light at the end of the tunnel that guides our community out of a dark past and into a bright, illuminating future for all who call this, call Mableton home. We urge you to reject anything that does not have or meet those qualifications or would lead to divisiveness in our community. There are already too many things that divide us in our community, so let's not create something new to add to that list. Let's continue to move towards bringing people together. Cobb County is a diverse community, and each and every action undertaken by our elected officials should be reflected of the fabric of our diversity. As you ponder your vote, please be reminded of the divisiveness of the Civil War, which was fought between the Union States and the state of the Confederacy over slavery. This is reflective of a very dark, painful period in our history for everyone who looks like me. A few may want to preserve the park in honor of the Civil War, but what about the rest of us? For those of you who are familiar with Star Trek, the character Spock would often say when there was a conflict, he would recite the line, "Logic clearly dictates that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." Logic dictates that the needs of our community today clearly outweighs, outweighs the desire of a few to hold on to a divisive period of time from our past. I recently read an article in the AJC that one of Atlanta's main golf courses was once a Civil War battlefield. The 144-acre golf course built in 1932 sits on the side of the Battle of Peachtree Creek. The good folks of Atlanta did not consider naming this course located within Atlanta Memorial Park after anyone from the Civil War. Instead, they named the course in tribute to a native son, golf legend Robert Tyree Bobby Jones. I'm not a golfer, but was intrigued by the history of the article. I'm sure that there are people during that period who probably wanted something different. It took courage to give the course this name instead of one that was reminiscent of the Civil War or anyone that fought in it. We can learn a lesson from this example. And lastly, when we consider our history, we should remember that the first people that were here were the American Indians. So if anybody should be given a consideration for a name, it should be them. Thank you.
I get you, Leah.
Ray Thomas.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman and the commission and staff. My name is Ray Thomas, and I am the Chair of the Legacy HOA AdCom. I'm also a board member of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I came with a prepared speech this evening. However, I am going to kind of, I'm going to ditch that and kind of speak from my heart. And first of all, let me just say, listening to the gentleman who just came up with the Georgia Historical Society, all I can say is wow, because I thought I lived in Mableton. Legacy at the Riverline is located next to the park. You come outside of our side gate, and the park land is sitting right there, and I had no idea that I didn't live in Mableton. I just figured that out tonight. But anyway, the, let me say that we certainly, at least me personally, I certainly respect the historical value and the historical features that are in this park. I have no objections, and I think my neighbors don't have any objection to this park, to the, the, the signs within the park indicating the, the redans, the chappade, the, the earthworks that are in there. I've, I've walked that property on several occasions, and certainly I can appreciate those that want to preserve the historical value and the historical features of the park. However, however, naming the park after a Confederate Civil War general is not appropriate, and we do not support it. I don't know if anyone here knows much about General Joseph Eggleston Johnston. You know, I did some research on him. And let me say this, if we're going to name the spark after, after a Civil War general, it dag on shore shouldn't be him. And let me tell you why, all right? This gentleman led the Confederate army in four battles and lost three of them. The only battle that he won was the Battle of Bull Run. And quite frankly, General Beauregard is the one that got credit for that, all right? He lost Vits, uh, uh, the Battle of Richmond, lost the Battle of Pittsburgh, and now, and lost the Battle of Atlanta. And yet, here we are in 2018, considering memorializing and putting this guy's name on a park next to the neighborhood in which I'll live. I don't agree with that. I'm going to urge you tonight, I'm going to urge you to please vote for the name Mableton Discovery Park. Now, as I understand, and one of the reasons why I ditched my prepared message is that a compromise might have been reached just before this meeting with a possible different name. Folks, when you think about it, Mableton Discovery Park is the perfect name for this park. Number one, it identifies where the park is located. It identifies and try, and, 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 in a way, brand Mableton with the type of things that we're trying to, to, to work in Mableton to create, which is a good quality of life and to dispel some of the myths that are, that are in the, in the area about Mableton. So Mableton, and then discovery. Discovery means what? That folks who are interested can come to our park and discover some of those historical values and, and features that are in the park, all right? In addition to that, folks can come and discover the beautiful piece of property that the, that we, as a county, own on, on the, on the river. So I, I urge you to please adopt that name. Mableton Discovery Park, that is the perfect name for that park, all right? Finally, the argument about traffic which Robin Meyer alluded to. I'm sorry, about parking, all right? We're talking about 103 acres. We're talking about parking being one acre of 103 acres, less than 1%. Less than 1% of this property would be disturbed for the parking lot. To me, that is no argument. So I urge you, please, adopt the name, Mableton Discovery Park, and I urge you to please pass the, and approve the master plan tonight. We have waited too long, and we need this park to enhance the quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Michael Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to deliver a few very brief remarks. The Hornets Nest at Shiloh, the wheat field at Gettysburg. These locations represent hallowed ground where soldiers fought and died during a tragic period in our nation's history. These sites and hundreds more scattered across the country continue to resonate over 150 years after the end of the American Civil War. Heritage tourists connect with the place names. When making plans to visit the sites where their ancestors fought and died, whether they wore the blue or the gray, they love to walk the ground where those ancestors were entrenched, not knowing their fate. As a Civil War historian, I've worked for the past six years in educating the public about this valuable historical resource located in Cobb County. Thanks to the generous help and support of the Cobb Parks Group, we've been able to lead several tours of various segments of the Riverline, including the property in question of Discovery Boulevard. And the request, I get requests literally every week to do more tours. Deciding to hold their annual conference here in Georgia in 2014, the National Civil War Trust, a Washington, DC-based organization charged with protecting battlefield property in the United States, not only the American Civil War, the American Revolution, and the War of 1812, they decided to come to Georgia for their annual convention. They surveyed all their guests. They had hundreds and hundreds of people that traveled from all over the United States. All 50 states were represented. And they had a sign-up sheet. The very first bus that filled, and they had a very long waiting list of people that unfortunately did not make the tour, was to visit the Riverline. These folks stood in sheer astonishment as they walked the ground, examined the earthworks, and learned more about what took place here during Major General William T. Sherman's efforts to take Atlanta. And speaking with various groups across the country on the history of the Riverline, and after sharing the conceptual drawings for interpreting the site, the same drawings that we used in the public forums, which everyone widely applauded to have this placed on the 2016 SPOSS ballot, which, as everyone knows, was approved. All of the groups, no, no exceptions, to borrow a phrase from the wonderful movie exceptions, to borrow a phrase from the wonderful movie The Field of Dreams, "You build it, we will come." I continue to get inquiries from people all over the country, including foreign countries, Great Britain, Australia, and other places. Let us know when it's ready. We want to schedule a time to come to Cobb County. We want to see these works that General Sherman quote indicated were by far the strongest we had ever encountered. The Civil War Trust recently released an update to their 2013 study on battlefield tourism. New research indicates, and this research was done by the University of Michigan, the research indicates an average family of four visiting the Civil War battlefield spends $1,000 on their trip. That's in lodging, local restaurants, gasoline, et cetera, et cetera. As Jim Laitheiser, President, excuse me, of the Trust remarked a few weeks ago, and I'm gonna quote Jim now, "Historic sites like battlefields are one-of-a-kind resources. By embracing them, the community can never become just an anywhere USA." Thanks to Commissioner Cupid, who was kind enough to give us a
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Few minutes. I'll be done in 15 seconds, if that's okay.
I left the other side at 1:30, so I'll give you 30.
Okay. Thanks to Commissioner Cupid allowing us a few minutes this afternoon. I believe we've reached a compromise. I would encourage each of you to endorse naming this property the Chattahoochee River Line Park. That still will communicate to heritage tourists the significance of the site
Thank you, sir.
And draw people here to our county, and hopefully drives from economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thanks for the extension.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Abby Schiffman.
Abby Schiffman, Cobb County. Commissioners, Chairman, you will continue to hear from us who support the libraries until the vote has occurred. Some say you are closing libraries, some say you are just looking at numbers. You say some libraries are underperforming. That is not correct. Some may be underutilized. But our library hours in 2008 were 1,089 hours open weekly. We are currently only providing 780 hours of being open weekly. The proposed cuts would bring us down to only 424 hours open weekly. This is for 700,000-plus citizens of Cobb County. Each library is different. I urge you to go visit each and every library to see what the wonderful staff are doing to serve each community that these libraries are in, all of them, not just the ones in your district. You may be elected by the people in your district, but you serve all of us in the county. Thank you to the state, who today is allocating $2 million from committee for the Switzer Library renovations. We hope the governor will sign this, and this, again, just happened today. If you make cuts to our library budget, the state, who also funds many projects and 11 full-time positions, may also decide to make cuts if they see that our commissioners do not value our public library system due to decreased maintenance of effort. I don't envy your position in what this has come to, but I urge each of you to be responsible to do what is right for the citizens of the county. You cannot fix the problem with underserving the library system, so please be a leader and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Riley?
You all want to realize pretty quick that I'm not Southern born. I'm from New York. So I'm not gonna tell the history of the park, but I'm a longtime member of the Sons Union Regiment. So I started going to meetings back in the 1850s with my grandfather. And I'm gonna talk to you about the joys of a battlefield, which I don't know how many people actually had that joy, maybe you, Colonel, if you were a mud marine. But the joys of the battlefield, I'm gonna start by telling in 18, well, 20 April 1861, my great-grandfather and his brothers joined the 69th New York, the Irish Brigade, prior to Bull Run, fought at Bull Run, went through the war, Spotslerville Courthouse. One of the brothers, Bernard, was wounded. All the wounded who could still walk were left with the regiments to go to the next battle, which was North Ann Ariver. One of the Confederate regiments thought the 69th was surrendering. The 69th thought the North Carolina regiment was surrendering, so they both came together and realized nobody was surrendering. And of course, he was wounded already, so he was an easy kill. He's in Section 27, Grade 411. That's a battlefield. It's not a park. It's not Joe Johnson. It's a battlefield. Next, I'm gonna go to my mom's family. Her uncle, Charles Ellis, he was a United States cavalryman. He went to Cuba when his regiment went to Cuba, came home, he was loaded with yellow fever, malaria, who knows what. Lasted about a year or two and died. That's a battlefield, not a park, not Joe Johnson, but a battlefield. Then we can go to my wife's family. My father-in-law's uncle, he was an Army guy. They were over in France. They captured a German trench. The Germans counter-attacked with overwhelming numbers, and being an Army guy, they were impressed with numbers, and they skedaddled, but he didn't. He stayed with his machine gun covering the retreat. Needless to say, he's buried in bony France. We visited him, I guess about a year ago. We're gonna stop again next month. Then let's go to World War II. My uncle Jimmy, he joined the 69th, and joined as a private, came out as a captain and unscratched to my father-in-law. He was with 225, was wounded in one of the islands, recuperated just before Saipan, went back with his regiment, 225, onto Saipan. About halfway through Saipan, there was an opening between an Army unit and the Marine Corps unit, and Japanese came in. According to the New York newspapers, he was a machine gunner. There was about 20, 25 Japanese in front of his machine gun, but they blew him up and his entire machine gun squad. He was the only one that survived, but they left him for dead on the field of battle. I guess the morticians found him. His eye was hanging out, different other wounds. But he went home a broken man, of course, with one eye. My father, he went through North Africa, went through Sicily and to Italy, went north of Naples, pulled out of the line, they sent him to Anzio. They finally got to Anzio, went north of Anzio, they pulled him out of the line again, and he went into the south of France, up through the south of France, and ended the war in Manheim, and went across to Mannheim and ended the war in Munich. He, of course, after all that, he was injured a couple of times. He lasted to about 1950, or lasted to 1954, and he died. And I was raised on an Army pension. That's what a battlefield is. Not Joe Johnson's name, not fortification, but it's a battlefield. You know, I've had my experiences also. I have major hearing losses from small arms fire. I haven't had a quiet second in my life since July 1967. I've had it ring in my ears since then. That, of course, is a battlefield. And now my son is a captain in the 69th New York, and he's also a New York City detective. So people should stop thinking names, Joe Johnson. It's not the fortification, it's the men who fought there. They, my Yankee relatives came down here for only two reasons. It wasn't a southern vacation. They came down to preserve the Union and free the slaves. They were the only two reasons that they came down here. And they accomplished it, and that piece of property is soaked with their blood. And I don't think it's proper to make it into a park for people to wiffle balls or soccer on the piece of property that men bled and died. Save my piece.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for service.
The last speaker is Kealan Mitchell.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, county staff, and fellow residents of Cobb County. My name is Kealan Mitchell. I'm a resident of Mableton, Georgia. I've lived in Mableton for 18 years and in Cobb County for 16 years. I love my community. I love this county. I'm a member of the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I have the pleasure of serving on the County Parks and Recs Board. But I speak tonight as a resident of Mableton in support of the master plan for Mableton Discovery Park. I grew up in the small town of Aragon, Georgia, about 40 miles northwest of here. I grew up hunting and fishing, and as those country folks say, I just grew up in the woods. It's one of the reasons I frequently walk and jog on the Silver Comet Trail, and the peace and comfort I feel when surrounded by the woods on that trail is hard to top. But I discovered that a jog or a walk in the woods next to the Chattahoochee River does top that. The opportunity to recreate on or near the Chattahoochee River is an opportunity that only exists for Cobb residents in close proximity to the Chattahoochee from Cumberland north. You can help this county take a huge step forward tonight in addressing that inequity. South Cobb residents can access this beautiful natural asset in the same way our northern neighbors do. Besides my love of nature, another aspect of my childhood that has driven my support for this park is the fact that my mother was an eighth-grade social science teacher who taught Georgia history for most of her career. I remember helping her grade papers. I remember the red, white, and blue book with the Georgia flag on the cover, but most of all, I remember traveling all over Georgia and all over this nation, as a matter of fact. And my mom was that mom that every historic marker and every historic site on the drive to vacation, we would stop. So the history teacher's son in me is extremely thankful that the historical assets from the Civil War, both Union and Confederate, will be preserved in this park. Naming this park Mableton Discovery Park is an invitation to all visitors to discover the various natural and historical assets on this beautiful property. It's an opportunity for every visitor to discover, interpret, and personally evaluate the relevance of what happened there and the importance of how it impacts our community and our nation today. Mama would often say that the history of this nation, and in particular, our South, is fascinating. She said some of it is beautiful, some of it is tragic, but all of it is complicated. I pray that you invite people to discover this complicated history in a dignified, wise, and strategic manner by approving the master plan and naming this park Mableton Discovery Park. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your service to this county. God bless us all.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to Tab 5. And I'm gonna have the screen reflect the various consent items. I'd just like to draw your attention to Item Number 11 and 12. We, to request of one of the commissioners, we expanded the background on those two tabs. Didn't change the nature of the motion. Just wanted to give people more information about what the nature of the consent item was all about. So I'll let you read through the consent items, and then I'll call for a vote. And actually, the same goes through Item Number 18. We expanded the background, the impact statement, to reflect the proper nature of the motion. But again, didn't change the basis of the motion. So that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cupid, sure?
Yes, just want to make note that for Agenda Items Number 11 and 12 have been modified to show that the increase in personnel and the adjustment for pay of the two deputy director positions will be funded through the E911 fund with no impact to the general fund.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
With that, any other discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to Tab 6 now.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. County Manager. We have 10 items tonight. Our first item is to approve contract with Tidwell Construction Company for bridge replacement on Castile Road over Pine Grove Creek. Castile Road over Pine Grove Creek, previously identified as Sewell Creek, is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $1,277,458 from Tidwell Construction Company was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $1,170,433 in roadway costs and $107,025 in water system costs. The completion date for this project is 120 consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Tidwell Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $1,277,458 for bridge replacement on Castile Road over Pine Grove Creek, previously identified as Sewell Creek.
Mr. Wright?
Motion to approve, and just kind of a side note, I believe it says here in the agenda, this is a 1962 bridge?
Yes.
So, you know, we've heard a lot about infrastructure in this country, and I think it's just, it's good to see that we continue to try to improve our infrastructure in place on almost 60-year-old bridge.
Absolutely.
Have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item Number 2 is to approve a contract with Paulette Tucker Enterprises DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling for Drainage System Repairs on Madison Woods Drive. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The low quote received from Paulette Tucker Enterprises DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is 45 consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contact, contract with Paulette Tucker Enterprises DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling in an amount not to exceed $67,456.25 for Drainage System Repairs on Madison Woods Drive.
Commissioner Weatherford?
A motion to approve is presented.
Second.
There was a second. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item Number 3 is to approve a contract with the Accelera Construction LLC for intersection improvements on Brookview Road at Terrell Mill Road. Intersection improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The low quote received from Accelera Construction LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $109,905.46 in roadway costs and $30,000 in water system costs. The completion date for this project is 45 consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $139,905.46 for intersection improvements on Brookwood Road at Terrell Mill Road.
Mr. Wright?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second? Discussion? Call a question. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is to approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for Powder Springs Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $129,325.15 from D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc., was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $119,325.15 in roadway costs and $10,000 in water system costs. The completion date for this project is forty-five consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $129,325.15 for Powder Springs Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. For those of us who are here and in the district that are very interested in seeing sidewalks installed throughout the district, just want to share these sidewalks for this Agenda Item Four and also Agenda Item Five have been prioritized due to the ease of being able to complete the gaps in sidewalks in these areas. I know that there are many other areas that are desired to move forward, and I just want to know, you to know that those are still on our list for consideration. However, these were just easier sidewalks to move forward at this time. So with that, move to approve Agenda Item Number Four.
Second.
There was a second. Comments? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is to approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for East-West Connector Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low quote of $163,933 from Chatfield Contracting, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is forty-five consecutive calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $163,933 for East-West Connector Sidewalk.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number six is to approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for drainage system repairs on Owl Creek Drive. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of this project is complete. And change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $7,808. It's requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $7,808 for drainage system repairs on Owl Creek Drive.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelera Construction LLC for Providence Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete. And change order number one final to the contract with Accelera Construction LLC a savings to the project in the amount of $11,757.72 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelera Construction LLC a savings to the project in the amount of $11,757.72 for Providence Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second? Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is to approve a recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Sandtown Road. Sandtown Road is an approved roadway improvements project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the city of Marietta. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Sandtown Road and authorize negotiation for final scope of services and fees beginning with the top-ranked firm, Low Engineers, Inc., utilizing selection process one competitive negotiations.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine is to approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Transmission Corporation for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Cherokee Street. Cherokee Street is an approved roadway improvements project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. This is also a joint project with the city of Kennesaw. Construction of this project will require the Georgia Transmission Corporation to remove and relocate their existing facilities. Since the facilities may be located on Georgia Transmission Corporation's easement, the cost for the relocation in an amount not to exceed $830,502.42 may be reimbursed by Cobb County. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Transmission Corporation in an amount not to exceed $830,502.42 for preliminary engineering and relocation of the facilities on Cherokee Street.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number ten is to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a federal land and access program grant application to the Georgia Federal Land Access Programming Decisions Committee to assist funding for roadway improvements on Old 41 Highway. Old 41 Highway is an approved roadway and safety operational project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The project consists of roadway safety and operational improvements on Old Highway 41 between Kennesaw Avenue and Stylesborough Road. The department requests authorization to submit a grant application to the Flat Programming Decision Committee in the amount of $2,500,000 for assistance with funding roadway safety and operational improvements on Old 41 Highway. This amount represents approximately thirty-three percent in federal funding for the estimated total project cost of $7.5 million. An approximate sixty-seven percent local match will be required on the, or five million. The local match commitment is available in the 2016 SPOS TIP Fund approved budget. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a federal land access program grant application to the Georgia Federal Lands Access Program Programming Decision Committee to assist with funding of roadway improvements on Old Highway 41.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve as presented.
A second? Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. And with that, let's take a short five-minute break. With the county attorney, because of a possible conflict of interest, in accordance with the rule of rule of procedures for the Board of Commissioners 1.08.05, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. The basic line is, I know I've been involved with a number of the parties in this, on next Agenda Item. But more port directly, I've contributed a significant sum of money to some of them. And I think in the interest of making sure that there is no conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself and turn this discussion over to the vice chairman, chairwoman. And the policy requires me to remove myself from the dais, so I'm going to come sit down there and join Ms. Rogers watching Ms. Mrs. I'm sorry? The donation funds.
Ms. Cupid, may I give that capable hand if it needs a discussion?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I believe we have a presentation from Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs to address the sole Agenda Item under Tab Seven, to approve the park master plan and naming of approximately 103 acres of county property on Discovery Boulevard in Mableton as Mableton Discovery Park. Jimmy?
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. We do have an Agenda Item for you tonight to review the master plan of 103 acres that the county currently owns on Discovery Boulevard, as well as the name of the property. The master plan has been developed or vetted through our Recreation Board. We've had several meetings where they have reviewed it. We've had public input on it, and they approved it at their last meeting earlier this month. So at this time, I'll walk you through the actual master plan. Just so you can get your bearings, of course, we have Mableton Parkway coming down the left side. Veterans Memorial crosses right above, just outside of the board here. And this is the Chattahoochee River. And then Discovery Boulevard runs parallel to the river for most of the way, and then turns back up and goes towards Shafferna. This is the acreage in green, of course. You'll see a couple of numbered things on the master plan. Number one are the sidewalks currently on Mableton Parkway. DOT currently has the Nickerjack Creek Trail in their program, and we'll be addressing that in the future. Three are the sidewalks which will be needed along Discovery Boulevard to allow safe access to and from the park. Parking signage, trailhead, and restrooms, this is the actual meat of the park itself. The actual floodplain line runs right along this area here, floodway and the floodplain. So the chapeaus, the radans, the Confederate chappade and radan, and then the federal radan is on the other side of Nickerjack Creek. What we're proposing to do is to come in off of Discovery Boulevard. One of the things which has been a bone of contention during this process is the actual placement of the parking lot. When the Recreation Board approved this earlier this month, they added the stipulation that when the engineering actually starts for the parking lot, that it would be done in the least obtrusive way. So if there's a way that we can come in, just come in off of Discovery, do something parallel to Discovery, and not have to come this far into the park, that can be done. But we really won't know that until the engineer gets on board and starts doing borings to make sure that we've got suitable soils. There's a small restroom building. We're also looking to do possibly a small version of a chappade just so people can understand what it is that they're looking at as a display. And then the trails that will come up and loop back around with signage, historical markers, showing what the people are looking at. Because if you really, you can walk by it, unless you have something telling you the story, you might not be able to pick up on it. So it's got benches, trashcans, all around the loop here. On this side of the creek, we also have a branch that comes down to the Chattahoochee there. It does a switchback because of the drastic grade separation taking you up to the federal radan. And on this side, there is a trail that takes you down to the river itself. These are, these will be unimproved trails. There'll be no concrete. It'll be slated at the most, but probably we'll have our trail machine go in and actually do a lot of those in-house. This is a proposed Chattahoochee River Walk that we're in the beginning stages of looking at, DOT is. So if that were to ever come to fruition, it would be a great addition to this project as well as tying into the Nickerjack Creek project. So any questions on the master plan itself?
Yeah, I was going to ask you about the southern part of the trail. So this is a proposed plan, and it's not in the master plan to have the River Walk?
No, that will be a future DOT trail.
But it's in the, it will be in the master plan that that should be there, correct?
Yes.
And it will tie into the Nickerjack Creek Trail?
We would have the land for them already. They would not have to acquire any right of way.
Okay, so it will happen eventually, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. That's a question I had. Thank you.
Can you, but the parking is not going to go down now?
The parking will go in this area. If, when the engineer comes on board, if there is a less impactful way of doing it without coming straight in into a rectangular lot, if there's some way to just come off of Discovery and do the parking lot alongside the road, it'll be done. But we really don't know that until the engineer gets on board and does their borings.
And what, how many spaces are there?
Ten, twelve, fifteen, max.
That's all.
There'll be a lot of walk-up traffic from these subdivisions. Any other questions on the plan itself?
Yes, Commissioner Odd.
The River Walk. You said that's not there now. Is there a natural trail there already, or are you going to be cutting down trees to put it in place?
There's a pretty drastic grade separation from this area down to the river. So this will be strictly a DOT project in the future if they acquire funding for it. So we would just be able to tie into that if and when they do that.
If I may respond, Commissioner Odd, I have walked the River Walk, and it's already clear. You wouldn't have to cut down trees to access the path towards Mableton Parkway. With this Agenda Item, I keep pausing, I'm waiting for Chairman Boyce to speak, and I'm forgetting that he's not up here. With this particular Agenda Item, what I'd like to do is to split this into two Agenda Items because we have two matters before us today. One is to approve the master plan, and the other is to approve the naming of the park. I'd like to seek assistance from legal to see if that's okay for us to do that without making a motion to separate the Agenda Item.
You could just make separate motions on the same Agenda Item.
Okay, very good. Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
If, once we approve, or if we approve the master plan tonight, and then there are changes, does that have to come back to us for approval?
As long as they are not substantial changes. For instance, if the parking lot is actually constructed within fifty or seventy-five feet of where it's at, there would be no need to come back. Now, if we come back and said it needed to go on the other end of the property, then yes, we would need to come back before you.
Okay. You're welcome. Are there any other additional questions? Okay, so with that, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number One of Tab Seven to approve the park, in part, to approve the park master plan for the 103 acres of county property on Discovery Boulevard in Mableton. Is there a second?
I'll second as well. Call the question.
And that is the master plan without the naming.
This is just referring to the master plan.
I just have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner.
As having the only other chapeaus, well, actually in the country, because Cobb County is the only place they are, I would just ask the park folks to be extremely careful. And when you put any trails in there, I've been around the ones that are in District Two. Also, I think it's really important that when you figure out how the citizens are going to be able to view these chapeaus, talk to some folks that, you know, have some historical knowledge or research about, so that people really get an understanding, because they are something that is nowhere else in the world, and they were very significant defensive fortresses. So I think it's important that people get a full understanding of how they worked.
Yes.
All right, so with that, call the question. And the vote passes four-zero.
And the next step, Commissioners, would be that we will secure an AD firm where we'll actually start the actual design to get the construction underway.
Okay, and what's the approximate timeframe that you project for the engineering design part of the plan?
The design will run us the next four to six months.
Okay.
And then after that, we'll actually bid it out for construction, bring that back to you as an Agenda Item.
Okay, so this may be next year, by the end of this, next year, that we would come back for the actual construction. Just want to make that clear for those who've been communicating to us about starting construction immediately, that this is a timely process, but that things are moving forward.
It'll be opening in 2019.
2019.
Twelve-month window.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'd like to move for our consideration of the park name. The name proposed in this Agenda Item is Mableton Discovery Park. If I can get your help.
Sure.
Mr. Geese, and just talking through just the history of the site and how we arrived to the name of Mableton Discovery Park.
The county actually acquired this property in 1990 as a settlement of litigation between the county and the Bessemer Corporation. There was, the county at that time named 720 acres that the Bessemer Corporation owned as historically significant. At that time, the Bessemer Corporation did sue the county, and the settlement was that in lieu of removing that historical significance, the Bessemer Corporation would donate the property to, a portion of that 720 acres to the county. The county's had the property since 1990. The date on the deed is February of 1990. It has often been a popular tourist attraction for the Civil War buffs, as well as the nature seekers wanting to see the Chattahoochee River. With the placement of this project in the 2016 Splas program, however, we knew that we needed to get a master plan developed so that we would know what to actually build, because it's hard to actually go in and know what you're going to do without a plan by which to do it. The, so the master plan process started, and we were quickly approached by many citizens saying that this is, we need to come up with a name for the park. And so the Recreation Board actually took in several different recommendations, vetted them through the Recreation Board process, and then the Recreation Board voted to endorse the Mableton Discovery Park. And that's what, anytime the Recreation Board makes recommendations on park names, it comes forward to you for final approval.
And how many people serve on the Recreation Board?
There's nine people.
Nine people, and they come from all four of our districts?
Yes, there's two from each district commissioner and one from the chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, and, sorry, does anyone have any questions for Jimmy before I make any comments? Okay, yes, Commissioner Burrow.
This is a hundred and three acres, and how much was donated from the Bessemer Corporation, seven hundred and twenty?
No, no, there were seven hundred and twenty that had the overall historical significance placed on it. They developed the remaining six hundred and whatever, seven twenty minus the one.
So we got one oh three?
Yes. The county got one oh three of the seven.
Is that what's in your district, the other private area?
No, the other part of this land that he's talking about was developed. What's in District Two is additional historic property that's also called the River Line. And that's where the other chapeaus are.
Okay. And that was in 1990?
Yes, ma'am.
But it wasn't named at that time?
There's never been an official name placed on the land from the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, because I have referenced that it was placed on the National Register in 1973 as Johnston's Line. The same park.
Right, Johnston's Line.
Riverline, I mean.
No, it's just Johnston's Line, that's what's on there.
But then in 1990, Cobb County obtained it and called it Johnston's Riverline. And it's on the Splas as Johnston's Riverline?
It is on the Splas as Johnston's Riverline, because it's always been known as that.
Okay, but is that a legal name? Or just a name we reference because we haven't developed it?
Normally, until the board approves something and votes on it, it's just known as that. It's not a legal name of it.
But it was put in the Splas under that name.
Yes, it was.
All right, Commissioner Weatherford?
Right. Do you have, can you verify when it was put on the Cobb County Register of Historic Places?
When or?
When?
1973, I believe.
So it was in the seventies, much before we acquired it?
Yeah, it was seventies.
But I assume then it was, the whole seven hundred acres were placed on that, probably.
Yes.
All right, and what was it called when it was placed on?
Johnston's Line.
Johnston's Line or Riverline?
Johnston's Line.
Okay. All right. The Parks and Rec Board, was it unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, I have a little question to add.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Geese? If you're not, okay. Used to voice being up here, let me turn my mic back on. Thank you, Jimmy, for walking through the history of how we acquired the park and also for how we arrived at its name. The history of this park for me began when I started as a Commissioner. And I had opportunity to meet with several members of the Riverline Historic District who had interest in this area of the county. And there were efforts to ensure development of this area into a park that was more accessible to the public. And there was a thought that through getting on the National Register and getting the master plan, that there would be federal monies to come and open this up for a park to be accessible to the public. And I've attended hearings on this matter, and I've shared with the gentleman who spoke today, and Michael, and unfortunately I'm not remembering his last name.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, that I remember attending some of those discussions. And there were mixed reviews there, as there was a lot of energy around creating an accessible park to capture this beautiful part of Mableton. But there was concern amongst many residents about the history, and matter of fact, the unfortunate connotation with this history that is in Mableton, and questioning whether or not this is something that should move forward. In speaking with different residents, I think there was general compromise that it was important to have a park in this part of the county. Mableton has done a lot of work to create a sense of place in their community. And having over a hundred acres of this beautiful parkland aligning the Chattahoochee River would only add to creating a sense of place, a special place in this part of Mableton. Many people know Mableton for the historic part of Mableton, which is primarily off of Floyd Road. However, moving to this area, this area had an opportunity to also capture an attraction in Mableton through this park. And so there was support in moving this effort forward. As we contemplated the 2016 Splas, I was approached about investing in the plan. We've had the park for how many years, and we hadn't put any money towards it. And through the avid determination and communication from those in the community, I asked that we put a million dollars towards developing this park, never associating the term Johnston Riverline Park with that agenda item. And in fact, it's to somewhat of a dismay and surprise that that's how it was named on the Splas, because that's not ever been in any communication to me about developing this master plan. And it's not anything I've ever discussed with the Commissioners about that name at that time. So, you know, I can appreciate all of the inquiry about the name today. But that was, it was never the intent to cap to, to associate funding of the park with that name, Johnston Riverline. The goal was to develop a master plan. With that master plan, however, comes the naming of a park, as was discussed, that we have never named these acres that are here. And certainly having a master plan prompts that discussion. And so the issue before us, at least for me, is what's in a name? Because it's clear that there is broad support for having a park in this area. It's also clear to me that there is majority of support for identifying the historic nature of this area. There are chapeaus that are there that do reflect fortifications that were put there during the Civil War. And what I'm hearing from persons who are both supportive of the name being proffered today and those who are not, is that we recognize that that history is there. And regardless of the name, that history is going to be there. And not there just by way of trails, but also markers that are on that trail to signify that history. So I don't think that history is necessarily thwarted regardless of what we come up with with respect to a name. There are some compelling arguments for those who support the park name as being Mableton Discovery Park and those that do not. For those who support a name that is aligned with Johnston Riverline or the Battlefield, Chattahoochee Riverline Park, Battlefield, any variation of it. I'm hearing that tourism is a significant element of that and that the name would drive tourism. But we've heard even from those who support, who do not support the name, that there is already tourism interest here. The gentleman, again, I'm so sorry, I'm forgetting this gentleman's name, has shared that he's entertained tourists there already on the site. I know the Riverline Historic Group has already had tours there on the site. The word is already out there that this is an area of the county that has these historical features, and it is an attraction. I do not think that the name deters that interest, and I have never heard anything suggesting otherwise. Could the name solidify that interest? Yes, I believe it could. But does having another name thwart the interest that has already been generated from what's there? I have no reason, I have not been given any information to tell me otherwise. I believe that what makes this site attractive for tourists, however, is developing the master plan and having a place to park and making it more inviting. For those of you who've been in the area, you really have to park on the side of the road, on the curb, to be able to enjoy this amenity. And so I'm looking forward to us making it more inviting through the features of the park, not necessarily the name of it. Which gets me to another point of how we make this park inviting. I was struck by the passion on the sides of both interested and less interested in the name Mableton Discovery Park. But when I heard of those who supported the name, they spoke of inclusion, being open, having a park for all. When I hear of those that don't desire that name, they speak of tourism, of people coming from outside this community in here and being appreciative of this asset, which to me makes me wonder, are we willing to supersede the interests of those that live in this area, who frequent this part of the county every day, through the interests of those who don't live in this community, who may spend a thousand dollars, which, you know, per a family of four, in hotel lodging gas, which means that even as they are traveling here, they're spending that money. How much money, how much of that one thousand dollars are they spending in this community to value this asset over all of the assets that Cobb County has when it comes to recognizing the Civil War? It's less compelling of an argument when I consider it from a monetary perspective, and it's less compelling when I look at it as far as the number of people that would be served through that interest of not naming the Parker, the, excuse me, the Mableton Discovery Parker, naming it something in association with a battlefield or the Riverline. I also have, for those of you, I probably rub the nerves of those in my district because I always look for compromise. I always looked at, how can we have a win-win for everyone? So I did meet with, I did meet with persons today who had an interest in naming the park something different in recognizing that it's a Riverline, doing something that perhaps is more geographic, recognizing it's a battlefield, recognizing it's on the Chattahoochee River. And I understood some of the reasoning for it. And I said, if there was any interest in that, I would want to take opportunity to get people around the table to see if those who are proponents for the name Mableton Park could be receptive to that. What I don't want to do, and I don't want to ever give the impression, is that, is that I support either-or scenarios when I think that both interests, an interest of multiple parties are important. To me, I would much prefer that we do have something that's done in collaboration than walk away from this discussion today, either with there being a winner and a loser. Because to me, that continues the trouble of this war. We always walk away, and the reality is, whether or not people look at the Civil War for what it is, people feel like there are winners and losers on it. And I really just hate the fact that this name is sparking a bigger and deeper conversation about where we are historically and where we are present day in Cobb. It almost feels like even there's winners and losers today when I even go to events that are about the Confederate, you know, Civil War, Confederate versus Union. Even if you just look at the representation of people who spoke today, you can see, you could see this divided clearly on racial lines. And that is not something, I think, that goes without observation. And, you know, it's, how do we look, how do we look backward and recognize a history in Cobb County? But how do we look to today and seeing how Cobb County remains a vibrant place with that history, but it's also growing more and more diverse? How do we create inclusion for everyone? And I just don't see naming it, at least having the name Battlefield in there does that. Now, I've heard a lot of support for Mableton Discovery Park, and I'm willing to support that name. However, I don't know where there are other names considered and what those names were. And if there's any way to bring in the name Riverline, to bring in Chattahoochee River, could that be a compromise for those that want to recognize the history there? I don't know. And I'm almost afraid to have that discussion up here, because what I don't want is to see a name move forward where there isn't holistic support for it. Just from the general sentiment that I got from our agenda prep session, I am concerned. We don't even have five Commissioners up here, so it could end up being a two-two vote, and then where are we? But I'm concerned that, from the sentiment shared in the agenda session, I am not sure I have the support today to name it Mableton Discovery Park. And I don't want to put that forward and then for there to be a counter motion to name it something else, which has no reflection of the interest of the community that vied for that name. So with that, I am, I am willing to support Mableton Discovery Park, but not unless I know that I have enough Commissioners to support Mableton Discovery Park. If there's a desire for something else, I would much rather hear from the Commissioners what their interests are and being able to, being able to incorporate a motion that reflects that with their sensitivity towards all that's been shared today. So with that, I'm just going to open it up and ask for all the Commissioners to share their perspectives on this. And I'll begin, since you already started.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just going to ask Madam Vice Chair.
Commissioner Weatherford, and then I'll go down to Burrow and.
I'm just requiring Madam Vice Chair, whether you're going to present a motion or you just want a general discussion?
I'm asking for this general discussion before the motion.
Okay. Well, for one thing, we approved the master plan, so that's going ahead as presented, and I think that's a great movement. I know that there's been numerous names floated, and I am concerned that, you know, we're taking away the historic nature of this park by naming it as proposed. I feel like that this name in some way or the other has been Riverline or Chattahoochee Riverline or Johnson's Riverline or whatever since 1864. And 1973, it was called that when it was put on the registry, and in 1990, when we purchased it, as well as, I believe there was another master plan in '08 that had something to do with this as well that called it the Riverline or Johnson Riverline, and then the Splas had said that. So I think to deny that is foolish and not factual. So is there a compromise? If there's an opportunity for a compromise, the parties can work together. I would support a motion that would send this back to the Parks and Rec Board, staff, Commissioner Cupid, and interested parties that would come up with a compromise that we all could support. But as currently presented, I cannot support the name that is being presented right now.
Commissioner Burrow?
Well, I agree. I see, I do see both sides as far as the support here tonight. But my issue is preserving history. Regardless of, I mean, that's what happened here, and whether we like it or not, that's what happened. And it's, to me, to be on the National Register listed that way, I have some information from the National Park Service that Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield was the. that Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield was the number one visited national park in the country in 2017. So, and with the number of visitors coming there, they're obviously going to want to know the other historic places in the, um, or parks in the area. So I, I would like to have more discussion and, and work on a compromise.
Okay.
Um, it's also been referenced that Mableton isn't a city. But we, we call it Mableton as a community, but it is technically not an incorporated city. But I don't, I don't know that that would have an effect on, um, you know, the name with it being on the National Register or what. But, um, I think we need to have more discussion and, um, maybe more inclusion among the board with you, Commissioner Cupid.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think what you're seeing here is what should have happened before the agenda was printed. The way things happen on this board is this, you know, the commissioner will walk and talk to the other commissioners and staff and all that, and that just did not happen. None of us knew about this until it showed up on the agenda. And so, you know, clearly, you already heard that there should have been discussion. But, I mean, I understand a lot of what Commissioner Cupid's saying, and I think Commissioner Weatherford is right in the fact that, you know, when you talk about the park, that's been approved. And, and so that's going to be there. But you know, there is an importance to history. And, you know, whether it's Johnson's Line, Johnson's Riverline, Choppade Park, I mean, there's a whole lot of different names. But if you think about a lot of the things in this county, Vinings is not a formal name. But can you imagine calling it something else? And the history of why it's called Vinings is because it was a train stop. We also have, we have Oakdale, East Cobb, Fair Oaks, Mableton, as Commissioner Burl said. All of these things are integral parts of our county, yet have never been formally named just as this area here, since many, many years ago, long before all of us, it's been referred to, um, based on what happened there. Um, and so I just, I think it's important that we consider that. But I think, Commissioner Cupid, the biggest, the biggest issue that I have is the fact that there really was no discussion among the board. And, and, you know, we, as a board, have talked about that many, many times in the past. That, that's, you know, we shouldn't be surprised as commissioners when something shows up on the agenda. And, and I really feel that that's what's happened here. And so I, I too support not coming up with a name tonight. And I think that more discussion has to happen.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to address why other commissioners may not have been communicated about this item. I can't remember a time where a commissioner has had a feature, a park feature in their community, and has ever walked the halls and talked to me about it. Please understand that there is a unique interest in the name of this park and a unique interest in this public recreation asset other than any, or different than any other parks and recreation item that came before this board. We recently had the opening of Sewell Mill Library. The commissioner who's speaking about not being approached did not approach me about that. So I think that that is the rub for many people coming in and weighing in on Mableton. There is a lot of interest about Mableton today that you do not see generated when it comes to other matters in Mableton. Mableton has been working hard. And I find it, I, I find it a little disturbing about how many other matters that we've had to address at Mableton. And no one has ever questioned Mableton not being incorporated until today. Mableton is not like Vinings or other areas. Mableton, the address is Mableton. If you look at their mail who live in 30126, their address says Mableton, Georgia. If I look at the National Register here, it says, and I look at the documentation, it says it is in the Mableton, the city or town, it says it's in the Mableton area. So I just want to point out that somehow the interests of this community are being trumped by other interests which are not associated with other parks and recreational features in other areas of the county. I want to also, um, address my, um, approach to parks and recreational assets. We have been in a significant process of identifying parks through the, um, park bond that the board recently approved. My approach to that park has been to let each commissioner determine what should be in their area. They know their district best. It is not for me to evaluate how many acres should be there, what's beautiful, what's not beautiful, how, um, is it, are there, is there too much land, is there not too much land? They know their community. And, um, that has been my thought and approach here, that this, I know, you know, I know the district, I know the interests of the district. For me, I don't live in Mableton, I live outside of here. But for those that live here, this is a significant part of their community and what helps to create a sense of place here. How could I not advocate for it? What is the harm and hurt? I want to speak towards the, what I'm hearing as the historical nature of the site being degraded here. And the master plan that's being presented, there is a trail that shows Confederate chuppades, that shows Confederate redan, that shows a Federate redan. There's going to be markers there. There's already, there's already, um, a National Register that has this park included on it. And, um, there are people who recognize the asset that is here. I also serve on Cobb's Travel and Tourism Board, and I asked them, how, I asked, um, I, I had this conversation about this matter, and it was shared that even if the name didn't reflect the his, the historical nature of the Civil War, that you can still overcome that through marketing of this area and through having markers on site. So I still think there's a way to capture that. However, again, I'm going to share with the community that, and I shared this last night when I was at your community meeting, it takes three out of five on this board. I'm not the one that you have to convince. And it's just unfortunate for those that live in a community that you do not have the support of others that would, that would advocate on behalf of their residents, as I'm advocating on your behalf today. So, um, what I would like to do is take them up on their willingness for there to be consideration towards a compromise. And to me, that's going to be the best solution moving forward, is to see if there's a compromise on a name. But I've even sat here and thought, if we didn't have a name, you're still going to have a master plan that is going to develop this park and create a beautiful place here along Discovery Boulevard in Mableton and still be an asset for this community. So don't walk away today feeling frustrated that this element of the agenda may not move forward as desired. You're walking away knowing that there are going to be steps taken to provide a plan for developing this and letting people see just the beautiful nature of, um, this area as it aligns the Chattahoochee River. So with that, I'd like to move that we hold the second element of agenda item number one to rename the 103 acres of county property on Discovery Boulevard in Mableton as Mableton Discovery Park until there is, um, further discussion with the Parks and Recreation Board, members of the Mableton community, and members of those who wish to preserve the, um, historic elements of, of the historic feature of the community in the name.
I'll second that, and then I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Weatherford.
Yes. While I agree with most of what Commissioner Cupid said, I think in deference to, uh, the naming of the park and each district having, uh, their own ability to come up with names, I submit to you that Kemp Family Park, Sewell Mill Library, North Cobb Regional Library are not on the historic registry and haven't been named that since 1860. So this is completely different than anything that's come before this board, certainly in the three and a half, almost four years I've been here. So that's why it makes it unique, not the fact that we're against Mableton or against anyone. It's the fact that this has been that way for hundreds of years, 150 years. So that's what makes it more significant, and I fully support coming up with some kind of compromise. Others that we have named on this board did not have that historic significance. So that, to me, is the difference in what we're trying to do tonight.
And, and I agree with Commissioner Weatherford, but to clarify a few things that were said. Prior to the agenda item coming forward for the Sewell Mill Library, staff was asked and went and talked to the commissioners to explain why the library board chose the name Sewell Mill Library. Um, in addition, 30339 Vinings is also an address just like Mableton.
Yes, it, I agree with you, and that was a recent, it was a recent renaming of that area of Vinings. But Mableton, as far as I can remember, has been Mableton for much, for a period much longer than Vinings has been named Vinings. And so I'm just going to have to disagree about the connotation of Mableton identifying this part of the county in Vinings, reflecting the area that you're referring to. With that, you know, we have a motion and we have a second, and I'm just going to call the question. Thank you, the motion passes four zero.
Okay, we're on tab eight now, right? Okay, so with that, um, Ms. Stanley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. On January 24th of 2017, the Board of Commissioners authorized the purchase of a business intelligence dashboarding tool, Click, from Karasoff Technology Corporation. Installation and implementation of the tool began in 2017. As one of the first users of the tool, Public Safety has implemented numerous applications and dashboards, allowing them to analyze and present data. Increasing demand and use of the tool within Public Safety and other departments requires expansion to accommodate additional users, including the remaining command staff in Public Safety. Click licenses are available to purchase with a GSA contract with Karasoff Technology Corporation. The cost to purchase and implement the additional licenses and software is $62,750.25. Dashboarding and data analytics tools are eligible capital projects programs under the 2016 SPOSS. Business technology transformation is an approved project of the Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of additional licenses to expand the enterprise business intelligence and dashboarding tool in amount not to exceed $62,750.25 under provisions of the U.S. General Services Administration Contract, GS35F0119Y, with Karasoff Technology Corporation authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rod.
So, um, for those in the audience and most of us up here, that sounds like a whole lot of computer mumbo jumbo and government talk. But one of the things that's really significant about this is this particular dashboard is one of the moves that the, the board and the county has taken to make a whole lot more data available to the public. We started in Public Safety, uh, it's been probably about, what, a year, year and a half since we did the work session?
Yes, sir.
Um, and showed the public what this does. Um, and so that's the first part about it. And the second part is, um, you see this every so often, usually it's with the U.S. communities, but, um, the county has the ability to save a whole lot of money in, in purchasing when we use contracts that are secured by other jurisdictions or even the federal government, in this case, the General Services Administration. So, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property's got one item. The Board of Commissioners approved the initial phase of a two-part contract with John W. Spratlin and Sons LLC in the amount of $260,000 for construction manager at risk services. Journal conditions portion to build a replacement fire station number one located at 5781 Mableton Parkway, Mableton. This is an approved project in the 2016 SPOSS program. What this item does is marry the contractor and architect for final design and final GMP, which is guaranteed maximum price. The final GMP will be brought back to the board for approval. The budget for this project is 3.3 million. I ask that the Board of Commissioners authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Cupid.
Yes, thank you. If you can clarify for me, Mr. Barfield, that the existing building that's on the premises, that it will have a veneer that matches the fire station being built?
That is part of the, that is part of the design, what the architect has put together.
Okay.
But I would like to sit down and talk to you afterwards about how it all ties together.
Okay.
Through, through the project, yes, ma'am.
All right, will approval tonight impact how that moves forward? Will the approval tonight impact the ability for both of those buildings to have a similar exterior?
Uh, no.
No, okay, all right. Would that so moved?
If I have a second? We have one comment, yes, Commissioner Rod?
Um, I just want to thank, thank Scott and Eddie and Joe, Tommy, for their efforts. We, uh, we spent a lot of time over the last two days looking at this contract and some others, just to make sure that, that the way the contracts are awarded and, and how we score them and all those things is totally transparent to the, the different people that are bidding on them. And so just, uh, thank you for all the work.
With that, any comments, I'll call the question. Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on to tab number 10.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This agenda item is to ask the board to authorize the purchase of defibrillators for the Public Access Defibrillator Program and thermal imaging cameras for emergency fire and EMS responding, responding apparatus using 2011 SPOSS project funds. Pursuant to the 2011 Cobb County Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, several pieces of additional fire and emergency medical equipment were identified as needing replacement or additional units on apparatus. These additional items include 32 defibrillators for our Public Access Defibrillator Program and five thermal imaging cameras for the technical rescue team apparatus, ORF truck, uh, at the new airport, and then the creation of the fifth battalion apparatus. We ask the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of the defibrillators for the Public Access Defibrillator Program and thermal imaging cameras in the amount of $79,657.50 for the emergency fire and EMS response, authorize related appropriation of funds, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Permission to, uh, permission. Motion to approve this presentation.
Any comments, call the question.
Wait a minute. Permission to.
I'm glad you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you hit yes, I appreciate that. Passes five to nothing. Okay, tab 10, we've already done all the public comments. So, uh, tab 11 is, uh, appointments. And like to announce the submission of names to the Kennystone Hospital Authority for consideration for appointment, uh, to the Kennystone Hospital Authority to fill the expired terms of post eight and nine. And those names are, for post eight, Joan Blune, C.B. Fair, and Carol Kell. And for post nine, Paul Payne, Melissa Urbina, and Cheryl Musial. And then Commissioner Burl has the announcement?
Yes, I would like to announce the appointment. I'd like to announce the appointment of Chip Kozinski to the Airport Advisory Board. He replaces Amy Rowe, who has moved out of the county, and would like to thank Amy for her service, and welcome Chip to the board.
Thank you. With that, we'll start with Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to extend congratulations to Bill Volkman again for his Silver Eagle. Well deserved, he's done a tremendous job on short notice. Also, my next town hall will be April 23rd over at the stadium. There's information on my webpage and also on my Friday newsletter as to where to park and where we'll be inside the stadium. Next, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Cupid for her inclusion as one of the nominees of the Women of Distinction. And, and further congratulations to Ms. Owens, who started the Davis Direction Foundation when her son lost his life due to an overdose four years ago, and she has also started the zone for opioid rehab, and she was named Woman of the Year.
Commissioner, Commissioner Burrow.
I too would like to congratulate Bill Volkman, very well deserved award tonight, and thank him for always responding and being there to, to help us through all of our finances in the county. I'd also like to extend sincere condolences to the family of Woody Thompson. We lost a true public servant Saturday night and a great friend, former commissioner. We will miss him, and we ask that you keep Betsy, his wife, and his family in your prayers. And I'd also like to wish everyone a happy and blessed Easter as we celebrate the resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Thank you to the Bells Ferry Civic Association, Cobb PD, all the volunteers for the adopt-a-mile cleanup on Saturday. Chief Register was with us, along with several of Precinct One commanders, I mean officers, and our community engagement officer Farr. Another big thank you to more than 500 residents that attended the Sprayberry Crossing meeting last Wednesday evening. The chairman and I were there, along with some other local state elected officials, and also our Precinct Four commander, Major Batterton, Officer Jegg. And I'd also like to give a shout out to the, the two gentlemen that actually started the action group that coordinated the meeting for the, the well organized and informational meeting that they provided. Thanks again to Jay Cunningham and Superior Plumbing for your generous donation to pair our military veterans with shelter animals in need of a forever home. This is a great program, and it's really taken off, so I appreciate the generosity of Superior Plumbing and also our Cobb County Animal Services for all the work that they do to help with these adoptions as well. Another big thank you to Chris Lindstrom and Bob Bear of Cambridge Park, Glenwood Ridge, and Glenwood Drive neighborhoods for inviting me and Officer Jegg to speak to their homeowners' group. Another well organized and informative meeting for them and us. On April 5th, the Dobbins Army Reserve Base Joint Land Use Study Meeting will be hosted a light, will be, I'm sorry, Cobb County and Dobbins are hosting a light pollution study to understand nighttime lighting conditions surrounding Dobbins Air Force Base and to propose recommendations. The presentation will be Thursday, April 4th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Jenny T. Anderson Theater, Mableton, Marietta Parkway, 548 Marietta Parkway. Also, the next Coffee with Your Cop for Precinct Four will be on April the 9th, and it will be at the Chick-fil-A, Lassiter Chick-fil-A at 3046 Shallowford Road. And this is a great program that Chief Register started with all the precincts, and I encourage everyone to come out and have a cup of coffee and meet your community engagement officer for Precinct Four, Natalie Jegg, and ask questions, get to know her, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, sir. Also, I'd like to add my congratulations to Bill Volkman for a much deserved award, and also to Commissioner Cupid, she's definitely a woman of distinction. We always don't agree all the time, but we always respect each other, and I appreciate all you do for our community.
Thank you.
And to Jay Cunningham, along with Bill and Commissioner Cupid. These are truly servant leaders in our community, and they give more than they take, and we appreciate all of that. Also tonight, I'm very happy to announce a new acquisition, we've talked about it, but two more park bond properties are officially completed as of today on Stilesboro Road and Mars Hill Road connectivity with existing Price Park. This would be another 107 acres, and we're jointly working on a master plan to connect it to the existing Price Park, so we'll have a trail through Alatuna Creek, hopefully all the way from Kemp Family Park, which is around off Stilesboro and that area all the way to the Lake Alatuna. So, another good purchase, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Pat Riley from the legal staff here that's been working tirelessly to get this done, so it was a great job by him, and he continues to work tirelessly to get this park bond done. And then, on Monday, Chief Register swore in the latest officers promoted in Cobb County PD. A special note is the newest deputy chief, which is Ernest, and I don't know who Ernest was, but it's Stuart Van Hooser, who is now the new deputy chief, forever to be known as Ernest, with also Major Farrell, Major Hamilton, Captain Kitchens, Captain Cohen, Lieutenant Dance, Lieutenant Kincaid, Sergeant Louise Lozelle, and Sergeant McCluskey, all our newest promotions, and we congratulate them on that. The also on Cobb County Fire Awards will be this Thursday evening. Congratulations to our well deserved honorees. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to make it, have a conflict, but the Fire Awards promotion recognition will be this Thursday evening, so you can take care of that. And then finally, I have a town hall meeting as well, although I'm not sure why mine's in a courtroom as opposed to a stadium like Commissioner Otte's, but I will do a joint town hall with the City of Acworth, I'm needing to step my game up, and that will be Tuesday, April 10th at 6:30, along with the City of Acworth, we'll be talking about joint projects and things in District One, which includes the City of Acworth. And then finally, we were all, several officers were meeting this morning, and Brother Ike Reichardt from Piedmont Baptist Church mentioned that this weekend is the Super Bowl for pastors, it's Easter, and I thought that was a pretty unique way to look at it, so remember the reason for Easter and why we're all here, and give thanks to our Lord and Savior.
Hey, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to acknowledge the passing of our prior commissioner for the seat that I'm in, Woody Thompson. His death certainly came as a surprise, and I think came quicker than many of us had expected, and in considering that timing, recognize that those of us who are in this role and those of us in county government and local governments across the state and country, we are serving with our whole lives. We are served, we are giving the best part of ourselves to serve public, and I just pray that we remember the positive contributions that we make in these roles. Sometimes it goes without fanfare or recognition, but I just pray that Commissioner Thompson knew that he did make a difference, he impacted the lives of many. If it weren't for some of the things that he did, I wouldn't be able to carry on some of the successes that we've had here over the past four years. In government, some of the things that we work on take several years to come into fruition, and it would be a misnomer for me to think that, or for anyone to think that all of the good things that are happening in our district are happening by my efforts alone. They've happened because there've been a lot of people that have helped to put the mechanisms in place for it to, for us to reap some of the reward that we're receiving now, so just God bless him, God bless his family, particularly at this time of bereavement. I hope that you can sign up for my newsletter if you're not signed up already. We have a lot of events that are going on, and some of them that I'd like to highlight include our annual Race Against Hunger, that is an event to support our Sweet Water mission through a spring chicken run, and that will be held on Saturday, April 14th in Powder Springs. I hope that you can sign up and register for that, no?
We're not spring chickens.
They'll, they'll, I want to be funny, but I don't think they're ready for my humor. That's what I say, they'll all funky chickens too, you know?
We're funky, but we're not spring.
I also want to recognize that Community Development is hosting a seminar on how to do business with community development, and that will be Thursday, April 19th. I was surprised to see how much interest was generated by their participation in an economic development forum in Mableton just last night. And for those who want to learn more about doing business in Cobb County, this is a great event to attend for existing businesses, large businesses, and people thinking about starting businesses. Again, that's going to be Thursday, April 19th at the Senior Services Dinner Theater off of Powder Springs Street, and the time is from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Also want to share that the chamber is accepting applications for its Cobb Youth Leadership Program. I'm currently in Leadership Cobb and have been learning a lot, even though I've been serving in a leadership role in Cobb for about five years, I've just been amazed at how much I didn't know about Cobb, and amazed at how many good people are serving in roles of significance across our county. If you are interested, if you know of a young high school student who is interested, or even a homeschool student who's interested, you can contact the county chamber and learn more about this program. The application deadline is Friday, April 13th. Also would like to share that Clay Elementary is having a fundraiser for getting shoe donations, and that a company has partnered with Clay Elementary for them to collect shoes that will go towards helping develop microenterprises in nations like Haiti, Colombia, India, and Tanzania, and the company has provided that if the school collects 300 bags of 25 pairs of shoes, that they will get $3,000 donated to the school, so you can help our developing countries and also help a neighboring school in the process. With that, I'd like to thank those and the community that came out to the meeting today to talk about a very sensitive topic for us here in Cobb County. It was not, and still is not, easy to recognize our history and also recognize our present and future in Cobb. Our history is one that has, that, for all of its beauty, has its challenges, and I think we have an opportunity for us to do better. It was frustrating to be up here and to have divisive conversation about an issue that's already divisive, and I think it just reflects the fact that there is not enough communication about, about how we connect our history to where Cobb is going and where it is. And while I think that there's a lot to, done to recognize our Civil War history, that not all of that history has, has been communicated, and all that history is not necessarily cherished, particularly by people who, again, saw themselves as losers i- in that event, and not seeing, not seeing that, that benefit. And that tends to fall on those who are people of color when they do think of that historic event, it is not overwhelmingly considered with positivity, but yet I think they even recognize that it's a part of our community, and I'm just hoping that as we delay that agenda item, that there's opportunity for us to talk through how we can make this a best, a, a, a best opportunity to recognize our history and where we are today through that name, and maybe it'll spark a conversation to talk about things a little bit more in depth. I happen to sit on a diversity initiative of the Cobb County Chamber where I think they're starting to recognize that in there are parts of our community and businesses who don't necessarily feel included and part of the discussions that take place in leadership levels in Cobb. And I think the conversation tonight was just a reflection of just how much opportunity there is, but how much work there is for us to recognize the, the challenges when it comes to making diverse populations feel included here in Cobb. So I'm hoping that we get this renaming done in a way that, that fosters that. Those are my comments, Chairman.
And actually, I'm going to say a couple things tonight. Everybody looks worried. First of all, I did a ride along last week with Precinct Two with a new major, Scott Hamilton. It's just a real pleasure to see him promoted up from the ranks, and I continued my, my consecutive streak, although I'll probably jinx it here, of nothing happens when I do a ride along in Cobb County. So I've been asked by the police department to do ride alongs every single night. Keep riding along here, but it was a real pleasure again to ride along with our finest. I, I really am, we're, we're going to find a solution to this. My, my job as the board chairman is to try and get, to encourage open dialogue, and I know it's tough because everyone in the commissioners' heel is very passionate about their districts, and I would expect nothing less than that. So, but I, I do know, having served this board now for over fif- almost 15 months now, that there's a way ahead, and we're going to find a way ahead, and it's going to be a better answer, because we all truly want what's best, not only for our district, but for our county, and I'm confident we're going to find an answer for that. So with that, just like to say again, congratulations to Bill Volkman, truly remarkable young man who has done so much to help us with this new budget process. He's always opening, always has the answer, and my hat's off to him. And I wish everybody, the, to remember like Commissioner Weatherford said, that he has risen, and for that, we are all saved. With that, good night. With that, good night.